I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first recognition, I'd like to have a moment of silence in recognition of Dr. Richard Giziewski, who passed away recently at the age of 69 after losing a battle with Alzheimer's. He was born and raised in Worcester. He received his bachelor's from Worcester State University and went on to get his master's from University of Connecticut. Dr. Giziewski received his PhD from Illinois State University in 1991 and went on to serve the Auburn Public School System for 40 years before retiring. So if we could do a moment of silence in his honor, please. Thank you. The next item is a very exciting opportunity for us to, as we do each year, to introduce to you the newest members of the Auburn Public Schools team. As you could get the sense, I hope, earlier from the energy in the room, they are an enthusiastic group. We had our first day today, so I'm sure they're ready for a good night's sleep. But over the past couple of days, they've been involved with some professional development that Dr. Lozay and the principals helped to coordinate, and met most all of them individually, then also with our new teacher breakfast. So this year, we're actually going to have the principals do introductions of their team members, and I will do any that may not have someone representing. So, Mr. Gannon, or actually, Ms. Dunne, do you want to start for Auburn High School?
Love to. Good evening. I'm very excited to introduce the new educators at Auburn High School. We have Scott Blackwood in social studies, Nick Lepite in music, Catherine Perrault in English, and Amy Plant is the special education team chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two additional ones from the high school who weren't able to make the seat. And we have Sarah Gilrain as our job coach, as well as Lance Warren, our science teacher.
Thank you. I am also pleased to be here tonight to announce for the teachers who are new to Auburn Middle School. We have Andrew Caswell, who is our ELA teacher, also our football coach. We have Megan Keel, social studies, grade six. Mary Scanell, readings, six, seven, and eight, and instructional technology, six and eight. Jared Kahn. Thank you.
Steve Juno actually served as a long-term sub last year. He's on board officially as an eighth-grade math teacher. And now I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lopez.
Good evening, everyone. It's exciting. I have four new staff members joining us at Swanson Road Intermediate. The first is Laurie Hess, our intensive special needs teacher. Next, I have Christina Caruso, our new music teacher. I have Stacy Berg, our reading specialist, and Sean Dunn, our new physical education teacher. I'd like to welcome them all. Thank you.
And then additionally, we do have Jean Arman. She's our registered nurse working at Swanson, too.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am going to introduce the staff for Paketak and for Bryn Mawr and the preschool. So we have Allison Bell, who is the teacher of the visually impaired for the district, and she will be housed at Paketak. We have Emily Wildgroup, who is a grade-one teacher at Bryn Mawr. And Cheryl King is a preschool teacher and is not with us this evening. And also Carrie Cashman is our new school nurse at Paketak. Thank you.
Any comments for the committee? Words of wisdom?
I just wish you all the very best year, much happiness, much fun, and a lot of success. I'm glad you're all here. Thank you for being a work in Auburn.
Wayne, I would like to basically say the same thing Keel did, but I would like to say that you are coming to a school system district that is very well-educated, working as a team, very well, working as a team, the superintendent, and everybody. And we hope you can stand up to the roughness of the Auburn, but I congratulate you all and wish you good luck and have a good first year.
Welcome, all of you. As Wayne said, it is a great school district, and I think that you'll find that the leadership team all the way through, the superintendent's office, is very supportive, and we will also be very supportive of you. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Dunn, and this is not an insult to you, but my son said, "We have like a teenager who's our new gym teacher." So I couldn't wait to get here tonight and see who the teenager was. But as I look around, it seems like we have a lot of very young people. So either that or we're getting very old. No, really, welcome aboard. It's great to have you, and I'm glad that you came tonight to officially meet us. Thank you.
Through the chair, and if I may, I'd like to introduce also, new to the entire district, our BCBA, Vicki Met, if I may.
Hello.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you are officially dismissed unless you want to stick around for a long and boring meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good luck there.
Yeah, good luck.
I didn't want to say this to embarrass her, but Emily Wildgroup was a student when I was a principal at Burgess many years ago. I remember her as a very young second grader, perhaps, so.
There were a few young ones there, that's for sure.
They were a great group. A great group.
Yeah, that's great. Seeing no citizens to make comments, I would seek approval of the minutes of June 29th.
I'll make the motion to approve those minutes.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some items are of information that you had requested back. If you remember that you reduced the fee in lieu of getting a percentage of what they collected in fees from students, and that was from the Auburn Youth Football and Cheer Clinic. As you can see there, they raised a total of $4,794. In total, there were 123 players who participated in it, and 19 of them were from Auburn. So what that yielded was about $1,200 into the Auburn Athletic account, which will be great help in paying for some athletic events for them. They did want to be sure, AYFC, to express their appreciation to the committee for doing that. They felt it was a great program. I actually heard from someone who lives outside of town that it was a very well-run program. So I think it was a win-win.
Congratulations to those organizers. They obviously planned it very well, and it was a success.
I was just going to say, through the chair, thank you, but also perhaps I would really put a 16 percent number, perhaps if they decide to do it next year, our local Auburn schools would be able to do this. That would be a way to have also put that 35 or something.
Right.
Kind of different from our own.
I'm thinking, and I don't know a lot about it, that it's probably, people are away, or there's some reason why they couldn't attend, because they have a pretty strong football program with all-town residents, so I'm sure something had to be up, but that's not a bad idea. Maybe unofficially, we could run that by them.
I agree.
Any other comments? Seeing none.
The next item, I just wanted to thank you. You've been supportive each year as I've attended the Summer Executive Institute. So much of the topics there, and since then and even in the previous spring, were really around social-emotional learning with children and the challenges that some children face. So it really was a great program, so I appreciate your support and allowing me to attend. The next item, just wanted to make you aware, with the presidential election process, I think it's an opportunity, a great learning opportunity for any election process, but obviously, we want to instill in our students that, you know, you need to vote if you have an opinion. You need to make your opinion known. So Deb Greymo, the town clerk, had actually reached out to us, and she's partnering with Mr. Spencer Canard at Auburn High. He's one of the We the People coordinators and runs one of the AP government classes. So in order to have them assist in the process and even making available, should any students who are of age to be able to vote, to be able to register to vote. So I think it's a great learning opportunity, and I commend Deb and Spencer for working together on it.
Question. Some years in the past, I know the different schools did mark elections. Is there any thinking along those lines this year?
Typically, that happens for the presidential elections. I've not yet heard of it, but in all honesty, I'd be surprised if it didn't happen at some of the schools. In fact, perhaps at all of the schools, they generally do some elections and try and teach about the process. The next item to share with you, Shaw's Supermarket, just as they did last year, they have a "We Love Our Schools" promotion, and they've adopted, so to speak, Paketak and Bryn Mawr schools. So we thank them for that opportunity, and I would encourage you to accept. The anticipated funds, we'll make you aware of them when they come in, but they'll actually be making donations to those schools directly. We'll make you aware of those.
Through the chair, I have a comment. Kudos to Mrs. Rochford, too, down at Shaw's, because she's really been a crusader in this, getting Shaw's to help the schools, help PTO, help Auburn Youth and Gunway Services. So she's really wonderful.
They do. Thank you for that. They, through the chair, Debbie's supportive of the community. Agreed.
I would entertain that motion.
I think the most things to accept, the anticipated funds received by Paketak and Bryn Mawr through the Shaw's and all our administration programs.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Excellent.
Thank you. The next item, we had actually had all of the schools, the schools at the time, not Auburn Middle nor Auburn High, actually had the Bureau of Environmental Health come out and do testing on air quality for them. So the former Auburn Middle School, Swanson Road, recently, we had that done this past spring. And what we've put together here for you is they had recommendations, some that are ones that we see in each and every report, and others that really spoke to one of the biggest challenges, I think, that we found, was that the unit vents, they're older units in our classrooms there, but teachers are able to manually turn those off. And what happens is, particularly in the colder weather, when heat blows, eventually it blows cool a bit, because it's pulling in outside fresh air to mix, and they would manually turn those off. So what would happen was it would get stuffier in there. I will say, as you noted through here, so we are looking at going to a more automated system, which we have at the high school and the new middle school now. So Mr. Fahey is getting prices on that. But in terms of the other items, in terms of exhaust fans, you know, any stained ceiling tiles, much of that work, if not all of it, has been completed. So we'll continue to, just as we do in all of our schools, stay up to date with things. We obviously want to make sure our environments for all of our kids, our kids and staff, are safe and productive for them to be able to learn. So.
Question. Did any of the teachers get asked why they turned it off?
Typically, so through the chair, through Mrs. Lopez, I mean, sometimes I think it was, and I think that cooler air coming, but also some of them were noisier, so they would turn them off. So that's being addressed as well.
Okay, because I was going to say, I used to turn mine off, because the racket at me was louder than me talking, and you just had to shut it off. And if you can't hear me...
You ain't kidding.
Yeah.
So those types of things, anywhere that there was a noisy one, and other things, too. So here, that's an example of one, on the tops of the vents, sometimes they would put cardboard down and plants on them. Well, that actually is preventing any air. So they were, you know, unintentional things, but ready, easily, items to be fixed for the most part.
Okay, good.
Good shape.
Do we have even a ballpark figure? Joe thinking, any kind of a number? Are we talking tens, twenties, thirty thousand?
I don't, he doesn't, typically, Mr. Fahey doesn't like to guess, although he's usually pretty close when he gets an estimate in. So as soon as he gets one, yeah. And we're looking to the CIP to be able to do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question through the chair. What is the water feature in the courtyard? I'm just curious. Was that a fountain that used to be there?
There was actually, it was a, looked like, almost like a little pool, and it had some plants growing in it and stuff. And what that does is, and there was an aeration to it, but the water's pretty stagnant. So what they say is it can attract mosquitoes and such, the plants, you know, can rot and stuff. So it's really all about, in this here, just to try and minimize or eliminate when you can. Like, one of the suggestions was, there was one of the bushes in the, actually, toward the front of the school, that was up against the building, and they said, you know, you should always cut that back so it's not touching the building, because it could promote, you know, mold or moss growth and stuff like that. So, but that actually had been removed or stopped even before they had finished this report for that reason, yeah.
Okay. Moving on.
The next item is annually, you need to appoint someone to the Board for the Southern Worcester County Collaborative. I have served since I began in this position, and it is my recommendation that you appoint me to continue, and I'll give you updates, as I do, on a quarterly basis.
You couldn't find a volunteer?
Well, Dr. Lozay wasn't interested. No. I'm teasing.
She's already got one of these appointments.
She gets the next one, right.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Brunel, Superintendent of Schools, as the Auburn Public Schools representative, on the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Board.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Have fun.
Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Glad we gave you so much spare time.
Well, actually, this next one, I will say, the appointment of the civil rights coordinator. Dr. Lozay has done this, served in this capacity for several years, and she actually, on some years, puts in far more time on this than I do. So it is my recommendation that you appoint her in this regard again.
Okay, all in favor on that?
Yeah, we didn't vote on the last one.
It's all right. We were there. No, that's all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. I know you wanted to make up for what you said in a quick manner. It's fine. So I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Kathy Lozay as the civil rights coordinator for the Auburn Public Schools.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nothing? Thank you, Dr. Lozay.
Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
The next one, just wanted to make you aware, as we do annually, I met both of the chiefs, reviewed the multi-hazard plans, the principals updated them, so everything is secure. We are in compliance with the law. We actually did this and signed off on it yesterday, so just wanted you to know. And I also extend sincere thanks, obviously, to both of the chiefs, but also the entire Safety Advisory Committee. Their work is ongoing. They meet at least on a monthly basis and do a tremendous amount, so I appreciate all their time and energy. In terms of the class size updates, and I will tell you that even since we put these out, these numbers have changed. Some have gone down, some have risen. We had a registration as early as this afternoon, shortly before noon time. So, and there, what we find is, as students, as we start back in the year, some who may have gone to a different community did not withdraw yet, so the paperwork catching up. So I will provide you another update at the meeting for next week, and we didn't want to ask the secretaries and principals today for accurate numbers, but we'll certainly have it for you next week.
Thank you. Any comments?
Just to refresh my memory, what is the maximum number?
So what the committee has done in the past is, when it goes beyond 25 students in a classroom, what we've done in the past, and it's primarily because we've not had space to bring on a new teacher, plus once kids meet their teacher, it's hard to separate them out, you've brought on an IA or more, depending on how many, and the intention being to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio, particularly during literacy and math. So the one area where we're looking at is the Bryn Mawr kindergarten, right now has 25 in each of those classes. So if it's such that that continues, or even they've gotten some more, I may bring a recommendation back to you for the next meeting, to bring on some support.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about space over there, too. So would the modulators be enough to accommodate if these numbers were in there to start separating groups?
So I'm happy to report, through the chair, that the module actually arrived today. I took some photos. It arrived in two pieces, in the tractor-trailers. The drivers did miracles in bringing it back there. So that is really intended to free up space for two rooms for some of our most special students, if needed. I honestly don't see that we would have a classroom open, but I think the route of bringing in an instructional assistant who could help, you know, particularly with literacy and math, would be the way to go, because they don't have open, available rooms. At Paketak, they, we could make some switches and open up a classroom. At Bryn Mawr, even with the new module, it does not have it, because right now, we're using space in the gym, and the new, Ms. Wildgroup actually set up in the gym, and Dr. Lozay and I went last week. I mean, it was an absolutely beautiful learning space that she had created. But she's also anxious to be in a room of her own, indoors and windows and such. So, but that should happen within the next week or so. So we'll monitor this, but I'll let you know next week. I'll let that sense.
Dr. Brunel, does every kindergarten class have at least one IA or more?
Every kindergarten classroom has one time IA in there. Exactly, yes, they all do. Yes. Thank you. And then finally, just wanted to give you an update. Last week, Mrs. Zottner and I met with School Resource Officer Brian Kennedy to review any lingering residency issues. In between letters that Mrs. Zottner and I sent out and business that Officer Kennedy made, we feel that we're in very good shape with this. So at this time, we're not going to recommend going forward, recommend requesting information. The more that we thought about it, some of the questions that you raised, in terms of who would collect it, where would we keep it and such, it's an ongoing issue that we have, not unlike many communities that grapple with this. So I think that we feel that we've got a good handle on it, but I'll keep you updated if any issues do arise.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business.
So the Chinese exchange program, just wanted to share with you a copy of the contract. Dr. Lozay helped to put together with Dr. Zhang, and it's all signed off, and we're in the process, actually, of sharing with her a bit of a PowerPoint or some sort of a presentation about our schools, which is a nice opportunity to kind of highlight some of the many nice accomplishments from the district. So that's in process, and she'll have that next week.
Any questions, comments?
Sorry, I'm busy talking tonight. Through the chair. Is it common that there isn't a boarding family available in Auburn? I noticed that we would put, or they would put them up in hotels and stuff. I just don't know how common that was.
This is, because, through the chair, because this arrangement is new, what we wanted to do when we spoke with Dr. Zhang is have a backup plan if there weren't enough host families. So at this point, there's a lot of unknowns. Their company, Ivy Education Group, they're going to be securing the host families. I think we'll have ample host families in Auburn, quite honestly. But if there's not, we just wanted to ensure that there was some sort of a plan, and that they would have chaperones who would be with, or actually, the younger children generally come with a parent or family member, is what she had said. But I don't think, any of us think that there'll be an issue with host families.
Because they would miss a lot of opportunities.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
All of itself. All right. Thank you.
And then finally, just wanted to remind everyone that there is a special football game titled the Top Cop Football Game. Actually, it's a week from tomorrow at Auburn High School, being played, Leicester playing Auburn High. And all the proceeds, everyone's volunteering their time, will go to the Officer Ron Tarantino's family. So they actually had a meeting, another meeting about it tonight, but I commend all of those who are organizing this and obviously raising it for the family, which is wonderful.
Columbus, Wayne?
No, I just, do you have the time?
It's 6:30. I'm sorry. It's 6:30, yes, at Auburn High School football field. No, we didn't put it in there.
And it's a very good cause, and I definitely would show up.
Any other comments? Yeah, I think it's going to be an excellent night, and it's great to see that people are still putting their best foot forward and trying to help out that family. It's just, it's a great thing. I also will be there.
Good.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. I mean, I'm sorry, new business.
Okay. We recently held a meeting, several of us who deal with building use forms, wanting to make sure that everyone was using the correct form, making sure that we're monitoring the use of our buildings, and truly believing, as I said to all of them, that it's very appropriate that we allow the community, I think, to use the building. We want to make sure, though, that everything stays in good shape, and we need to be sure that we know who's in the building and when. What we found in, you've always assigned for a site manager fee, but we've not always applied it when it's been outside usage. And as our fields get used more and more often, those two, and even actually, probably the cost to replace them would be far greater if we needed to. So I know earlier this year, you had made sure that there was a site manager there, like when the colleges used it. So it is our recommendation that we hire a site manager when there are groups that are using the field. And what I would do to bring to you is, if it was a community organization, what you've allowed in the past is, so long as they designated a site manager that we trained, and with an expectation of what needed to be done, that you would allow that to happen. If there was an issue, though, that we would insist that we provide our own district person. But on occasions when there are, you know, two and three and four groups using, like the high school, for example, it would be my recommendation that perhaps they split the class, but that there be a site manager there, because they're the ones who know, you know, to make sure that the field is left in the condition that it was founded, you know, that there's not trash around, and just providing general supervision, I would say.
Wayne? So, so if we have outside people come in, and you're going to request a site manager, they're going to pay for a site manager, right?
Correct.
And any site manager that we have on our own schools, how is that going to be? We're going to pay through our budget? Is that what you're saying?
No, so, for example, when the colleges came and used it, so we assigned a site manager, and we charged the college for that. But when we have local groups, our own local groups that use it, there could be the option that we would train one of their members, you know, so say, so we train them and say, okay, so you're going to be the responsible person to make sure that everything is, because when they sign up for the building useful, and they're basically saying, "I'm agreeing to make sure that it's left in the condition that we find it." But if that doesn't happen, then we would say, we're going to assign our own, we have about five or six, probably five right now, site managers that have been trained, that we, that work for us. We then charge the organization, and then we pay them. We do have a line in our budget, that's for $10,000 right now, to pay for site managers. If you remember, originally, when Auburn High opened, the town meeting set aside a sum of monies, it was about $400,000 or so, and the interest from that was to be used, correct, was to be used for a site manager at the high school, and that's really for the use of the gym.
Right.
Because interest rates are so low right now, the money that's, the interest that's generated, isn't enough to pay for site managers. So there is some site manager charges that come directly out of the Auburn school budget.
But that pertains to the Auburn residents or students?
Correct.
Not the outside?
Correct. Outside groups, outside groups always have.
Always have.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And question, does Brian Data's in charge of his site managers?
He is. He oversee, it's one of his responsibilities, is to oversee, and in fact, it was his recommendation, because he's here oftentimes, particularly at the high school, at night, and he said, you know, it can get quite chaotic there, you know, even with our own youth organizations there. And he said, to have somebody from our, our trained site managers there, walking around to make sure that everything's being done properly, he thought it made sense, and I agree.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to the president, say, "I'd rather place for exterior to..."
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
We have just started FY '17, but it's already time to... We have just started FY seventeen, but it's already time to start thinking about FY eighteen, believe it or not. We rolled this out, Mrs. Worsbicky, last week at our leadership team meeting with the full leadership team. So, we'll actually start meeting with principals in early October, mid-October, for them to do their budget presentations to us, because then it's November fifteenth and sixteenth, when we'll do presentations to you, which is, will as we know, come in the blink of an eye. So, what I would ask you to do is just to be giving some thought to the budgeting priorities. In next week's agenda, you'll see that we've listed in there some of the priorities that you've had in the past. Certainly you can add others, but you know, the strategic plan is one that we stay committed to and trying to make sure that we realize those objectives in there and student achievement obviously as well. But others that you think of, we would be very interested in hearing from you.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for getting out ahead of it. Moving on.
The special town meeting has been set for October eighteenth. That will take place at Auburn High School. And we put in here the draft articles. Actually, Mrs. Worsbicky and I met with the town manager and the CFO just last week regarding these. And I think it's fair to say that they fully understood the need for these articles. And we actually reviewed some projections. I know that they'll be sharing with the selectmen of the finance committee. Before getting a vote from you in support of these, I do want to make you aware that on the second page, it's very likely that Article Eight, as well as the motion on that page, that we'll have to postpone those until the day meeting. And the reason is both of those have to do with the Paketchak roof project. And at this point, we're still in the queue with everything with MSVA. They've not yet assigned an owner's project manager, which is the first step. Once that happens, we then need to go out for bid. So, we're not going to know the total cost or even the amount that they're going to reimburse us. So, in all likelihood, we're going to need to postpone these. But we wanted to just put them in just in case we had it before we gave it to you. But just to highlight the articles, Article One is regarding McKinney-Venter, which is the Homeless Transportation Act. This is money that went into the general fund revenues. We're seeking $17,493. That's what the state reimbursed us for what we paid out in homeless transportation, which as you can see that we actually paid out $48,394. So, it is one of those partially funded and partially unfunded mandates that we have. So, that one there has always received strong support. The Article Two is regarding Medicaid receipts. We had requested this year currently 110,000, but based on what we received in FY sixteen of 162,000, we're recommending that that go to 160,000, which would give us an additional 50,000. And those monies are in reimbursement for what we spend. The next article with regard to bringing in, we had a need to bring in a specially trained special educator into the school district as well as a specially trained support person to assist a new, to assist new students who came to the district. So, we're looking to have this taken from general fund revenues, which would add to our baseline budget. But with the fact that the town received an additional 190,000 in Chapter Seventy, we think that's a reasonable request. And it's important that it get added to our budget because that's going to be a reoccurring cost on an annual basis. The next one, Article Four, is regarding the purchase of materials, specialized materials for some new students who entered the district. It totaled $21,214. So, this would come from general fund revenues. These would actually be one-time costs because they're so significant to begin with, but to get those approved for this year as well. And then Articles Five, Six, and Seven seek to reappropriate funds from CIP. This would be no additional cost, it's the same we went into when we did the Brinmar and Swanson Road roofs, that there'd be no additional cost to the taxpayers to replace the Paketchak roof. But with the approval of these, the taxpayers of Auburn will save between $300,000 to $500,000, depending on the cost of the roof. So, I would ask for a motion in support of these articles because we sent them as draft articles in anticipation of your vote.
I would entertain that motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, thank you.
And then finally, upcoming events. Today was our first day of school. Mrs. Worsbicky will do some reporting on that. Dr. Lozay and I had the opportunity to go through all of the classrooms of two of the schools. We hope to get through all of the others tomorrow. I applaud the elementary schools, they all did, I mean, the middle school and high school as well. Actually, all of them did activities to bring in either the whole school or particular groups of students before school started to really ease the transition, whether it's ice cream or picnics, freshman orientation or sixth grade events. And then as you can see, we very soon shift into curriculum nights that will be taking place at the instrument rentals. And I think it's fair to say, we both thought that things were off to a great start and it was as if they'd been in school for several days, a lot of, or maybe they were in shock. There was very quiet, very much down, down to work right away. So, it was a great start, really excited for the year.
Excellent. Well, welcome back to the teachers after a nice vacation. Nice relaxing summer, I hope. Any comments?
The buses were running, it's good.
They were, they were all running and Mrs. Worsbicky will report on that. But I was out in the morning and in the afternoon and very pleased with how it went. Some little, you know, wrinkles that will work out, but those are normal, so, yeah.
We've certainly had worse years, that's for sure.
That's fair to say.
No bus calls today. That's a good thing.
Okay. We now move on to teaching and learning.
So, as Dr. Brunel mentioned earlier with our new teachers, we hold a new teacher orientation every year. So, on August twenty-third, we actually had fifteen new teachers, most of whom we met this evening. They came to the high school, they enjoyed breakfast with their mentors. The principals were there to introduce them to the entire leadership team and to introduce them to the other colleagues that were there as well. We also had Dr. Brunel speak briefly and it was really, I thought, very passionate of her to welcome them all to the most noble of professions because we all drew, as educators, believe that to be the case. And also to stress that they are now coming to the best team possible around the area.
Yes.
It was also an opportunity for us to recognize teachers who are in professional status. So, that designation is earned after three years of successful teaching, but it also marks the end of their mentoring and induction program. So, it's a big next step for teachers. And every year, we recognize them and we give them a certificate, a small mentor from beyond public schools. And after all that fun, we did get on a bus, a school bus, to give them a tour of the town so they could see where all the different schools were located. We stopped at three of them and had different presentations. At one school, Mr. Bouvier did a presentation on technology in the district, how to get on their email from home, just some very basic technology pieces. And then Dr. Brunel did a presentation on important contracts and forms that they need to remember to fill out, which every new teacher needs to know. And finally, we had Mrs. Rosemary Reedy present on IEPs and 504s, which is critical for new teachers as well. And then the rest of the day, they spent together in their classrooms, getting ready and acclimated. So, I think it was a great day.
Excellent.
I also wanted to give you a little update on the opening days. I know that in your packet, you have the schedule. We did it a little different this year. Usually, we all gather together the first day at the high school for breakfast and then we go into the cafeteria as a team. But this year, we had teachers start at their respective buildings and then they went out to lunch on their own and they came back to the high school. We had a lunch buffet there, lunch buffet, you just wouldn't believe the selection. So, I understand that Mrs. Janice King would like you to see. Your mouth will stop watering. But some of the selections were frozen yogurt, brownies, cheesecake, lemon bars, strawberry cream pie and fruit. And teachers were thrilled to have that. So, after they got a little sleep in their belly, we brought them back into the auditorium. And that's when Dr. Brunel addressed them, her welcome back. And we also had a keynote speaker this year, Jessica Minahan. She's the author of this particular book, The Behavior Code, Practical Guide to Understanding and Teaching the Most Challenging Students. We gave every teacher a copy of this book before they left for the summer, so they had the opportunity to read it. She was engaging and humorous, but yet she took a very serious topic and provided a lot of additional information for our teachers. So, I felt they left there with several great ideas to start their year, no matter what student walked into their door. I also think principals, based on our conversations with them, will continue conversations around this particular book throughout the year, maybe doing some case studies or actually having some students in there that are presenting with some challenges and they'll brainstorm based on this book, some solutions to those problems. Day two, which was really, believe it or not, only yesterday, which seems like a week ago now, was really our first official professional development. So, we had training on our new ELA program, K to five, our new Midas online program at the middle school and high school. Eric Bouvier did some training around that. At the high school, they worked along with the Niasca accreditation work, so they did that. And then we had a group of people who really dug a little deeper into this book and solved some problems. So, that was great. But we found though, that a lot of feedback was, they really liked that change in the schedule in terms of not starting the day altogether, but rather at their building. So, we'll keep that in mind for next year as well. Just want to give you a few updates on the summer professional development, which seems like a long time ago as well. We did work with the new K to five ELA program, we did a lot of producing with that. We actually had Wonders, the program we adopted, representative came in and worked with us to ensure that our teachers had a good starting place for the year. They'll continue to come in throughout the school year and support our teachers. We did some work with the middle school math, the middle school social studies, foreign language department got together, K to twelve music, grade six science, and a new course or two at the high school. In addition to that, we once again updated the report cards at the K to five level based on this first year of Go Math implementation. We had more tech training for Go Math for cohort of teachers so they can support the other teachers. Some of our secondary people attended outside AP trainings, which was great. I always commend these teachers, they always come forward every summer and commit a lot of their time. So, kudos to them. And finally, finally, I just wanted to highlight this most recent accomplishment of Auburn. We recently had sixteen of our Auburn High School students take a college course and took it at the high school. It was called Introduction to Information Technology. They now have completed that and are in three college credits through from SIG at a MIA of $100. So, what an opportunity for those students. Mr. Bouvier was actually able to teach that course. We've all been working very hard over the last couple of years and I think we've talked a little bit at some of the meetings to get this off the ground. So, he was finally approved to teach it. He was as excited, I think, as the kids were. So, one other key person in all this was Amy Sampson. She's a high school guidance counselor. She actually created a flyer, went out and recruited, called, called kids and we were thrilled that we got sixteen trailblazers to come in and join us. They came for two days a week, nine to twelve at the high school. They had online pieces they had to do, they had projects in class. He had them taking apart computers. It was really phenomenal, the skills that they were developing. And at the end of that, we did have Miss Sampson create a survey. And in that survey, the feedback was very, very positive. The students found it to be very valuable. One student's comment, and he actually was a senior who had just finished, that he really felt this was preparing him for this fall when he went into college, which was significant. We also asked them what other areas they thought we should explore in terms of really making this program a little larger. And they talked about English, psychology and math that they would be willing to take courses in and they thought their peers would as well. So, we're really optimistic that we'll be able to broaden this program as we go forward. Their pictures are still on Facebook. Check them out, smiling, so it was a great success.
Thank you. Any comments? Ms. Harrington?
Sure, you want to do this? All right. Yeah, I just think Auburn is the envy of surrounding towns because we have programs like, you know, the two-day program that the staff just went through and it creates camaraderie and teamwork and therefore we have teachers that go out of their way to help with other programs and, you know, starting the college courses. This is just amazing, so I think it's our leadership team. It's a pat on the back for that, yeah.
Dorothy.
I just, I think that idea of adding more courses is swinging, it's also fantastic. But I think that's great, especially to offer something of cost-saving.
Any other comments? Thank you for that report and I'm glad that the teachers are all involved. It seems like an inclusive thing. And just to kind of back up what Jess had said, it seems like these are things that they want to attend and they want to be a part of and then they want to help out where they can. And I don't know, that's, that's pretty special. It doesn't happen everywhere. I've been around the block a few times, you just don't see that. I'm sure, you know, I'm sure there's some good and some bad, but we, you know, it seems like we've got far more good than there is bad. And a lot of motivation and people that are excited about the jobs. I thank you for putting these programs together and I'm sure that's why they are the way they are. Due to you and Dr. Brunel and the rest of the staff, leadership team. Thank you very much for that report. Now, everyone's favorite part of the evening, business and financial.
Well, as Dr. Brunel mentioned, I was going to mention, I was going to talk a little bit briefly about opening day. We feel that opening day went really well. She and Dr. Lozay went around to the schools and checked things out. We felt, I've also checked in with the principals, the secretaries and the busing situation went well. We felt it went off pretty well. There were a few minor glitches, but we've been working through those issues. Arrivals, we were tracking our arrival times and departure times and our arrivals looked good across the board. We felt like we did pretty well, so we'll keep working on that, keep monitoring that, so I have the data for you. So, I'll keep on top of that. But I felt that everything with the, you know, with the arrivals this morning, with the buses and the pickups and stuff, we had a few little glitches, like I said, but I tried to actually stay on top of who, you know, the issues were with what parents and I did try to reach out to each of those parents directly and speak with them. So, I feel like tomorrow's another day and we're off for a better start tomorrow, so. But I will be reporting more about busing in the coming weeks. So, I will be back probably at the next meeting to get more update on that, so.
Questions, Cecilia?
Yes.
How many buses are we running now, eleven is it?
We're running eleven, yes. Right, through the tiers, so. But I'll report more on that next week, more the next week, so. But overall, I felt like it was really well. Everyone's worked really hard. I've been working really hard with the central office team, especially Sharon O'Connell, who's been doing a lot of the busing input and the bus passes and been working closely with Linda Pernell from AA Transportation and Officer Kennedy to make sure that our, you know, bus stops were safe and, you know, accommodating for children, so.
Excellent.
Safety is our number one priority.
I just wanted to say, I told Mrs. Chris to do this earlier, but I did. We had a really fantastic bus driver who stopped and talked to the parents and let us know situations were going on, you know, down to what minute we could expect them to arrive, just ended up thrilled. So, we had a very positive experience.
Okay, so moving on to budget type items. I wanted to talk just quickly about the previous, the previous year count, fiscal year sixteen. We were happily, well, July, I sent over a memo to CFO Casanova's asking to carry over an amount of money. The amount of money that we asked to carry over was $287,912.25. And that was for, it was money that was already meant to be spent, but it was encumbered. And what we've been waiting on is to get our arrivals of some of the, we try to make sure that everything's complete before we pay our invoices. So, just getting all our package slips in and recording that all the items have been received and also just getting the invoicing and sometimes invoices don't come in right away. So, you can't get everything done by June thirtieth, but I'm hoping within the next few weeks, two months or so, we'll have everything paid off. We've already made a big debt of payments already in our warrants payable that you see here. We have quite a few bills there, so we'll be closing that out. So, that went very well. I included in your packet for omnibus transfers, as you recall, you had given me permission to do the omnibus transfers to close out fiscal year sixteen and make adjustments. So, I gave you a listing of all the omnibus transfers that I had done and sent over to CFO Casanova's to be posted, so. Have those and if there's any questions?
Say it on.
Okay. I wanted to talk to you about the MSVA Accelerator Repair Program. At the present time, we had the projects, as you know, we had the roof and the boiler over at Swanson Road and the roof at Paketchak, the roof at Brinmar, excuse me, I apologize. I'm getting them ahead of my schedule. I'm getting them ahead of myself, I'm thinking about the pack roof that we're hoping to get soon. But anyways, those are at, all of those projects are in the closeout phase with MSBA. We actually finally got our final invoice from the contractor for Brimar for the roof. That's been sent in and I've sent that to MSBA, so that will signal them to come out and to do the audit for Brimar, so that will be happening soon, I would think. As far as the project for Swanson Road, we're still waiting on a few construction change orders from the contractor and the operations program manager to be finalized and then we'll submit that to MSBA, so I'm sure that's going to be a way to be closed out as well. But usually, once everything's submitted, that's a signal to MSBA that it's time to do an audit, so we'll be looking to do that, so, very soon. And I'll keep you abreast of that as well. My next thing, in light of Dr. Laze and Dr. Brunel's great work about offering concurrent enrollment opportunities for our students that Dr. Laze just mentioned, for students to take, receive college credit for courses, I'd like to request your approval to set up a revolving account entitled Concurrent Enrollment Tuition. This account would be set up to take in the fees, like when they're paying, students pay to take the courses, and then be utilized to offset those costs where we would pay, like Quinn-Sigman Community College to, for a teacher. We were fortunate enough to have Mr. Bouvier teach the summer course that we just did, but those would help to offset some of the costs, so we'd like to keep the tuitions that we receive from students to put them into that account and help offset those costs. So I'm looking to get permission to establish a new revolving account, get your support for that.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to establish revolving account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. Do we give Quinn-Sig any money to offer these programs or is it all just given to us as a...
Well, basically, we would pay, the students would pay a small amount to take the course. We collect that, but we have to pay an amount to Quinn-Sigman in an invoice, that they would invoice us after the class was taken. Oh, okay.
So, no, so through the chair, actually, Quinn-Sigman is only charging $100 a student for the three-credit course. What we did is, and you had approved in the budget, a concurrent enrollment line, so from that, we paid Mr. Bouvier for his time this summer. If we have courses that take place during the school day, that would run, say like for an AP course, and instead it also gets credit, so we get high school credit and get credit at Quinn-Sigman, there would be no additional fee that would be paid to the teacher during the day, but the students pay $100. So really, this account that we're seeking to establish is to take in the funds from the students and then Quinn-Sig doesn't want to get 16 separate checks, we would write one check from the omnibus.
Okay, so students are paying Quinn-Sig essentially.
Yeah, essentially paying Quinn-Sig $100 for three credits, which is a fantastic bargain.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brunel.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
I also have, in your packet, I have provided a budget transfer for the school year '17. I've made a few adjustments. The transfers are adjustments to that Y17 budget for the salaries that needed in the line when we approved the budget. They were listed as to be negotiated, so those have been negotiated and so those are the transfers that are accounting for there, so. So I'd like to get your approval. Most of them are within series, but there are a few that are between different series, so I'd like to get your approval on that as well.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to have the budget transfer, the transfers just presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And as previously mentioned in the superintendent's memo and by Dr. Brunel, the September 8th Top Cop football game that we're hosting with Lester High School here in Auburn, it's a fundraising in memory of Officer Tarantino and the school department is looking to get your approval to allow the gate receipts from this particular game to be donated to the fund that a family of Officer Tarantino said like to request your approval to do that.
I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Okay. And I've also put an up-to-date budget report in your packet as well for '17, so you can take a look at that and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have with regard to that. Danny?
Any questions? Moving on.
And the last item, Dr. Chris Brunel, we received a letter from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Office for Food and Nutrition Programs. They were indicating that we had corrected action plans submitted by myself and Mrs. King, that they've been accepted and that we adequately addressed all the issues at this time and there's no further action needed, so that letter is in your packet.
Excellent. Any questions, comments?
Glad to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Great job. We now move on to policies.
Thank you. There are several policies that were first brought to you at the June 29th meeting, namely the Student Activity Accounts Policy, the Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drug Use by Students Being Prohibited Policy, and the Meal Charge Policy. So it is my recommendation that you approve the three of those on second reading. They were either updates from MASC directly or updated to stay in line with our own practice and procedures.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the policies on second reading. We're doing all three?
Yeah. No issue with that? No? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Can I just ask a question? Is it a big problem with students' accounts not being paid or a small problem?
Through the chair, I, it varies. I think the vast majority of our students and families keep their account balances up to date, but I, having said that, considerable time is spent to the Food Services Department and Mrs. Worz Bicki and her team members in calling and trying to track down monies, so there are different opportunities that people can play, pay. The online system is the easiest one. You can add money, you know, right to that account. So this is really to try and address some of those more habitual offenders with things, but I will say, Mrs. Worz Bicki, Mrs. King do a great job and Mrs. Livstead in food service to really, really try and reach out and have it addressed before it becomes a problem.
That's a big problem.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The next policy...
If you do have a big problem, what do we do then?
Do you want to speak to that, Mrs. Worz Bicki? Through the chair?
Well, basically, through the chair. We basically reach out. I've worked with many families. If there's an issue and they're struggling, that I try to set up payment plans with them to bring in money, you know, if possible. You know, we work with them. Most people have been very accommodating about paying their debts.
So when you establish something with them, it goes away? It seems to work out all right?
Yes.
No, go ahead, Adam.
Part of two, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has also mandated that at the end of school year, when the fiscal year closes, that there should be no bad debt upon lunch programs, so that gets taken upon by the budget to pay off any bad debt. But Auburn itself is in a good position, whereas other districts have a lot more debt and, you know, bad debt. It's an issue across the board with all districts and message systems, I believe. Auburn is very fortunate that, you know, most of our, we don't have very, we have very little debt compared to the majority of towns.
Good, thank you.
Through the chair, the only other thing I was going to say is, one of the first things that Mrs. King and Mrs. Worz Bicki does is, for a family who's struggling, they speak with them about their income and if they might qualify for free reduced lunch because we obviously want any family that qualifies for it to take advantage of that opportunity. So that's one of the first things they do as well.
Right, I understand that, but my problem is that, you know, people can afford it and they're not paying it.
Correct.
I mean, because then that goes on the backbone of the people that need it, you know?
Mm-hmm, agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, this is actually required, Teaching About Alcohol, Tobacco, and Drugs, which we do at different levels, age-appropriate obviously, but this is one that is required for us to have on the book, so it is my recommendation that you approve it on first reading, policy IHAMB.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy, the IHAMB.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
The next one is the Sexual Harassment Policy. And we actually had looked at this and it had been decades, actually, since it had been updated in the district, so we looked at MASC for guidance around that. Actually, it had not changed dramatically, but it is my recommendation that you approve this one first reading this evening.
I would entertain that motion.
Make the motion to approve the policy, ACAB Sexual Harassment, I'm frustrated.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And the concussion policy that is noted there, that's actually going to be on for an upcoming agenda. They're still working on tweaking that.
Okay. And the next, next item, I had a chance to look at it a little bit, but not enough. A lot going on this week and my office torn apart and I have a million other excuses, but anyway, it seems like it's pretty in-depth and some thought was put into it, so I would like to put some more thought into this item and if you wouldn't mind possibly pushing it off to the next meeting.
I have a question.
And as I was sitting here, as I was sitting here this evening, something else occurred to me that may be a good possibility, is, I already came up with a few questions and what if anyone on the committee had any questions about the policy? If we could just email the questions to you and maybe you could prepare to speak on them next time around? And I'm not looking for any communication back and forth, just if you have any questions, forward them to Dorothy as to who, what, when, where, why, how, and that way she'll be prepared to speak to some of the policy items.
I just have... It's about the rest of the meeting.
It's...
I just have... It's been a two or four, six minutes. Sometimes not right for me, so that I, I tend to prepare, she would say, by 5:00 p.m. Tuesday.
Six.
Well, the thing is, too, if you need to, you can bring it up at this meeting anyway, so if you come up with something late.
Sure, no, I mean, just so that I can actually...
Just prepared to answer the questions.
Right, right, right. Because some of these I didn't work right in depth and I didn't really recommend those as well.
Yeah, and I just, I want to make sure that we're able to do the same. It's only been a few days and if anyone was in the situation that I was in this week, then, you know, they probably would have struggled to actually give it a good read and think critically about the documents, so that would be something I would look for. Gail, did you have a question?
I actually have two questions. Is what's in red new? That's been added. And evidently, I was in here and you volunteered to somehow do this?
I did this on...
You just made it up out of here.
Actually, I made it as a summer project and I sat in the office and helped all of the classes and looked through all of them because one of the primary purposes, and I also, my memory was refreshed that on the first page of our handbook, there's still a number, one of our primary duties is to make policies and make sure that they accurately reflect the mission of representing students. So I...
So this is what I'm getting at, this is based on what, policies we already had or...
Oh, yeah, some of them.
On MASC, Bolton's or...
Actually, there's quite a few things. I spoke, really, to people in the working class at MASC, but it's one of the areas here. I looked into what we can do better, I took into several things to make up for some of our goals. So it was really just a little bit of housekeeping and just thinking about how we can do more to the rest of the world, so.
Well, thank you for doing all that work.
Well, thank you so much.
I would entertain a motion to move this to our next meeting, which is next Wednesday? Is that correct?
Yes. Will meeting be next Wednesday?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. So you're talking about all three of them, George?
Everything that has to do with, yep.
Okay, oh, four, that's four.
The school committee bylaws. So, yeah, it'll give us, there's a lot, there's a lot to read there, a lot to delve into and in the interest of time, we still have executive session tonight and it's been a bit long and I think it'd be a good thing, so again, I would entertain that motion and then I was still, I was still opening up to questions as I get a second, so. Is there a motion to move this to our next meeting? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote, thank you. Okay. Moving on to, that's all we have, we see.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I'd entertain that motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, ask for Nash General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21, 82, to conduct strategies for negotiations with the union and our human personnel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Foslin?
Yeah.
Mrs. Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Stoebe?
Yes. Thank you. Good night, everyone.